This is the ninth of our different ward meetings here in Ward Two. Of course, we have Rick Dowd, your Ward Alderman, you know him. Do you know Derek Tebow, who's from Ward Eight? And what I usually do here is talk about a few issues that are facing the city and then take any questions or comments that you might have. And we try to wrap it up within about an hour because often people have other meetings and we found that if we go more than an hour, people don't want to come back because, you know, it takes too long. And this is Matt Sullivan, who's the Community Development Director, in case we have any questions for him. Thank you, Matt. So there are many things we could talk about, but let me touch on a few and then anything else you would like to bring up. We're happy about the fact that the city has received some very significant recognitions in recent months. We were surveyed as the fourth-best-run city in the United States, and they did this based upon the fact of the quality of the services that Nashua has and the relatively low cost that taxpayers pay for that. And so we got fourth out of 182 cities. It's interesting that on the same measure, the state of New Hampshire actually got the most efficient because of the low costs of state government. We received, and I think that's what this shows, is we run an efficient, effective city government, and we do many things to try to save money every time we can. For example, we made some changes to the city healthcare plan, which reduced annual costs by $3.9 million. We have done some smart energy policies that are saving us about $1.6 million and other things that we're always looking for ways to try to save money. The other recognition we got was the city is the second-safest city in the United States. And a lot of people deserve credit for this. The police and fire departments, of course, do a great job in helping to keep the crime rate as low as possible, as well as, you know, people safe in their homes. But we're doing, the Board of Aldermen and I are doing everything we can to support them and help make the city even safer. That is our priority. For example, we last fall authorized two more officers to go to 197. We are working with them now to try to, they've said that it would help the police department to have either a kind of a mental health social worker available to them to answer some calls because, you know, as they sketch it out, the vast majority of their calls do not involve like an arrest or law enforcement. A lot of times it's resolving a dispute or other people, someone's upset, you know, they're very agitated. So sometimes they feel it would help to have a more low-key person approach and someone with some mental health expertise because we're finding that more and more of these calls have to do with people, you know, with various mental health issues. That's just another thing we're seeking to do. Now, the other things that are happening are we are about to embark next month, or in the month of May, on the national community power. So you might have read about this. This was something enabled by the legislature, was studied by, we had a citizen committee to look into the whole issue. We're allied with 16 other cities and towns in pursuing this venture. And what we do is we, national community power, in conjunction with other communities, are part of what's called the New Hampshire Community Power Coalition. And together, they went out and purchased power for, beginning in May, at a price of 15.8 cents per kilowatt, which is about 22% below the current Eversource rate. So the way this will work is you will still receive your bill from Eversource, they will still collect for all of the other charges on the bill, all these distribution charges and everything they get paid for, their blinds, their poles, the distribution. But there's one line where you're paying the cost of power now at 20 cents a kilowatt, up near the top of the bill. That will now be a lower figure, 22% lower because of community power. And you will see that in the first, you'll pay a bill in late April or early May at the old rate, and then from there on in, you'll receive the new rate. And for Eversource customers, this is an automatic transfer. You won't have to do anything. You will get something in the mail, it explains all this in detail, and you always have the freedom to opt out of this and go back to Eversource or some other supplier if you want to. But we're excited that, we think this can save $2.6 million for national consumers just in the next few months. One thing that I wanted to touch on is the revaluation that was currently, that was done last fall. Now, this was a, come on, come on in and sit down. This was a state-ordered, state-mandated, state-supervised revaluation, done pursuant to state law. And the city would not have done a revaluation at, you know, last fall because we could see the trends in values. Because the thing we encountered was that the value of homes went up so much, 41% on average, whereas the value of commercial properties, factories, malls, office space, did not go up nearly as much. In fact, in some cases, actually went down. The city's biggest taxpayer is the mall of New Hampshire, the Pheasant Lane Mall. And the Pheasant Lane Mall, by the revaluation firm that the city hired with state approval, was Vision Government Solutions or Systems. Their value came out $20 million lower than it had been. It had been valued at 150, they came down at about 130. But the mall is contesting that and saying that they actually went down $50 million to 100. So there will be litigation, there's already litigation over that. And the unfortunate part of it is because the homes went up so much, and the commercial property did not, it pushed the tax burden towards the homes. Because under state law, it is allocated, taxes are allocated based upon the fair market assessments of every property in the city. So if a property is 1% of the entire value, they pay 1% of the taxes. So before the revaluation, homes represented about 65% of the total value of the city and paid about 65% of the taxes. After the revaluation, the homes represented closer to 70% of the entire value, now pay something in the high 60s of the total taxes of the city. But the revaluation does not collect more money, but instead just reallocate. Now, one thing, but we know that the property taxes are hard and high and hard for people to pay. So we did increase the elderly exemption. But I noticed in the New York Times recently, there was a very interesting survey of all 50 states. And it was very intriguing because it took the median home price of every home value in all 50 states and across the country, for each state. Now, the median home price for New Hampshire was $455,000, which is probably about what Nashua is. And then it also calculated, you know, on a state-by-state average, what the property taxes would be on the home with that median value. So as an average, on a $455,000 home, what are the taxes in New Hampshire? The answer was $9,900. And each state was ranked in that way. Now, there was only one state where the median, where the tax on the median-priced home was higher than New Hampshire, and that was New Jersey. What this tells us is that, you know, we have a state that relies very, very heavily on property taxes. Because overall, the tax burden in New Hampshire is very low, but it is really focused and concentrated on the property taxes. Now, as a local official, you know, this is something, and we could get into everything that the state's up to and more cross onto the cities and towns and all that, but, you know, it's just difficult because we know how hard it is for people to pay the property taxes. On the other hand, you know, we're not going to have services without them. So I just thought that survey was interesting. Now, one other thing I wanted to touch on before we go to your questions is the middle school project. We are engaged in improvements to all of the middle schools after a lot of planning. Fairgrounds was done a year ago this fall, last fall, so the fall of 2021. Penachuk is partially done and will be completed over the summer for the fall of 2023, this coming fall. And the new Brian McCarthy School will be completed in the southwest part of the city to replace Elm Street for the fall of 2024. Now, Rick Dowd is basically supervising this project as chair of the Joint Special School Building Committee. This is a big undertaking, it requires a lot of expertise and, you know, time and energy. So I want to thank Rick for just doing this for the entire city. This is something that will last for, it will have repercussions for the quality of education for decades to come. And we're just very glad that the project's not cheap, it's not a cheap project, but one that will really upgrade the school infrastructure that we have in the city. Other than that, you know, I'm just optimistic about the city's future. I think we have energy and direction, I think there are a lot of things that are going well for us, and, you know, I'm just excited to be able to be part of it along with so many other people, from Board of Aldermen, our city staff. There's Tim Cummings, who is now the Administrative Services Director, used to be Economic Development. We have proposed a new Economic Development Director, a woman from Oregon who's coming to the city in 10 days, two weeks, you know, end of the month. And will be, go before the Board of Aldermen early in April to be interviewed. It's an appointment that needs confirmation by the Board of Aldermen. So why don't we just go to your questions, comments, anything you have here at Charlotte Avenue School?
I have a comment.
Yes. Harvey, this is Harvey.
I don't know if you've gotten to this yet, but I wanted to compliment the, I don't know what you call them, the guys who clean up the snow.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Employees, yes.
The streets have been absolutely spotless with all the snow, and I just think they did one hell of a job, and I want to tell you, I thank them, that's all.
Well, thank you, Harvey. So they work hard, every, yeah, I just know from experience, every storm is different, sometimes there are different problems. There's 300 miles of streets, you know, sidewalks, everything. So it's a very difficult job, those people work very hard. And yes, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you've seen what they've done, and I always, you know, want to thank them for just working so hard over the course of the winter.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, where did you come up with the idea that you should have a ward discussion? I guess, what do you call this tonight?
Like a ward meeting.
Is that a ward?
Yes.
How long has this been going on?
Well, I started, I was, came into office in 2016, so we did 16, we did one meeting in every ward, 16, 17, 18, 19. And then in '20, we needed to stop because of COVID. And we did some virtual ones, but they didn't really, you know, during COVID, they didn't really, you know, it wasn't the same. I think we did one in every ward during that period of time. And so now that we're sort of back to normal, you know, we resumed doing them this year in 2023.
Well, the reason I ask is because I'm old enough to remember Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who had fireside chats on the radio. We didn't see him on television because we didn't have one. But this reminds me of that time because I just think it's marvelous. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I don't think I quite measure up to that standard, but thank you for the comparison, or at least, you know, the little bit of a similar thing. Yes, anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Eric Dowd.
Yes.
What is the status of recycling in our city? Cardboard, paper, plastics, and glass are transported over to the landfill? And are they leaving for additional processing in other locations, or what's happening?
So the, as we have the single-stream recycling, which you're familiar with, and we collect it all and then consolidate it at the landfill, and then we put out the contract, the processing and the recycling, and we do that basically on a bid basis. And the organization we've contracted with to sort and dispose of the recycling is Casella, which is a firm out of Boston. The price of disposal varies very radically. I mean, at one point, it was zero, you know, we're just giving it to them. Then it went up to like $140 a ton. We were paying to have them, it came down to very low numbers, like $10, $15 a ton. Now it's higher, I don't know the exact figure now, but it's gone up from the 10 to 15. So the price varies considerably. I mean, this is different than, you know, a long time ago when you could actually sell these materials. The one thing that Casella has emphasized is that they're able to deal with everything but the glass, there is absolutely no market for glass. So they, Casella landfill crush and, or just landfill the glass, anything that, they have separation machines, they, the glass stream is just landfilled. And they advocate that really residents not put glass into the recycling, first of all because it's not recycled, and number two, it is, it is hard on the separation machines, the, you know, the grinding of the broken glass and all that kind of thing. So we want to encourage everybody to recycle, but if you can, you know, forget the glass because it doesn't really do, you know, any, anything for anyone. Yes.
So on that note, does it get recycled or crushed here in Nashua and goes through our landfill?
No. Oh, no, no. See, because it's all consolidated, we're not separating it out.
Oh, okay.
So the consolidated stream goes down to Boston, they separate it and then they deal with it. So they, in one of their landfills, they put the glass, the separated glass, and then they sell or dispose of the rest of it. So we don't do, we don't put anything in our landfill out of that waste stream.
Okay. So my way of thinking is that if we still continue to recycle the glass, even though it's not really recycled.
Yeah.
We're paying for this problem, it's not ending up in our landfill. Am I crazy on that?
Well, it's, that's true, that is true. I mean, I would say that the, in terms of the volume, you know, glass is very small proportion of the total. I mean, the big volume items are the cardboard and the newspaper. So if the glass goes into our landfill, I mean, it's not a big user of space. Matt, you?
What is the plan at City Hall to fix the differential between property taxes and commercial property taxes so that the residents aren't paying the burden of property taxes in the city? You guys have a plan? It just seems like you guys are absent in Economic Development Director. Do you guys have a plan to sort of fix that differential so that the commercial properties are paying, you know, an even or close to even amount of what we're doing in terms of property taxes in the city?
Well, the, in terms of the tax rate and everything I talked about earlier, I mean, you need to talk to the legislature. I mean, if we had our way, we would probably, we would, under these circumstances, would consider hiring, charging a higher rate to commercial and a lower rate to residential. But we do not have that legal option. We have to do everything, every detail pursuant to state law. But you might be asking about what are we doing to try to promote more commercial building and development in order to increase the tax flow? Take downtown, we have an unprecedented amount of private development downtown. The school-street housing is the first time in 125 years that anyone has put that kind of money into ground-up construction, new construction in the downtown for apartments in, you know, since 1900. We are working with BAE to seek to expand their facility so that it will pay more in taxes. We have KJ Can coming in at the former Ingersoll Rand location, they're improving that site right now. And that will add considerably to the tax base and will, and will add 200 jobs or so. And they're, you know, we are, there are things going, you know, on at the south end. Our three sort of tax profit centers are Amherst Street, Daniel Webster High, which is probably the biggest, and downtown. In those areas, the level of service and the cost of service does not even come close to equaling the revenue that's coming in. So, you know, we're always working to try to see, you know, positive constructive changes in those three areas to try to increase the base. But as, you know, as I mentioned with respect to the revaluation and the effect on the single biggest taxpayer, that is the mall. Their value has gone down $20 million according to Vision and $50 million according to them. So $50 million is the loss of about, is about, almost, that's like $9 million, $10 million lost in taxes. So it is hard to offset that much value when you see that kind of decline in the, in certain large residential properties. Now, on that particular one, we are encouraging them to try to redevelop some of their site. We would love to see the Sears vacant store redeveloped for, say, residential or some other use that would increase value and, you know, give us, you know, some more residence.
So the city's position is to make some of these properties in more mixed use versus straight commercial?
Yes, but these are, yes, but they're owned by private enterprises, so we can't make them do anything. I mean, we would, in the mall's case, we would love to see other types of development on a, how many acres is that site? I don't, 100 acres, you know, whatever it is. There's a lot of other stuff that could go on.
Do you think that as a city, we could increase new commercial growth in the city of Nashua if we offered lower commercial property insurance rates?
Well, we don't, we don't set commercial property.
I don't, but I presented to the Board of Aldermen the opportunity where our fire department is this close to being a ISO-rated Class 1 fire department, which would lower our commercial property insurance rates across the board. It would be minimal investment in order to do so, and we would be the first ISO-rated fire department in the state of New Hampshire. It's a prestigious honor. You talked earlier in your opening remarks about, you know, how we're ranked as one of the safest cities, and I think that that would go a long way, where you have a nationally-accredited police department and one of the top echelon nationally-accredited fire departments as well. I think that would be an investment that the city could make, and they would, it would pay big dividends because you would have other businesses that would want to come here because of the lower commercial property insurance rates.
Well, that is a good idea, and in fact, I'm looking at my calendar, I think I'm meeting with a fire chief tomorrow, and...
I met with the fire chief last quarter, and we discussed that, but unfortunately, he doesn't have the resources or the staff to dedicate to that, and so that's why I've been advocating so much for it, because I think this city could use it.
All right, well, I'd be glad to investigate what we need to, what we need to do for that. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for all the potholes that have been patched. I love the online way to report the potholes.
Yeah, that works really well.
Because almost as soon as I do it, it's done by the next day. Love that. So compliments to the street department on that. Talking about streets, I'm a pedestrian, bicyclist, and driver, and I don't want to tell you how many times I've had almost collisions with bicyclists when I'm walking downtown and they're on the sidewalk illegally or going against traffic. And I don't want to tell you how many times I actually got run down by a car driver this past autumn.
As a biker?
I was the bicyclist.
Yeah.
I took off their rearview mirror.
Yeah.
Is there something we can do, I don't know if it's the police or what, but to get the bicyclist off the sidewalks on the right-hand side of the road, all according to state law?
Well, the police would need to enforce that. I mean, the city doesn't have, you know, the power to arrest or issue tickets for anything like that, but...
The city?
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a law enforcement function. I mean, what we want to do is create more bike lanes for safe bike travel. So unfortunately, when the sidewalks were redone a few years back, now it's maybe 10, you know, there were no, there were no bike lanes provided for, and now it's very fixed. Now, the city's master plan, called Imagine Nashua, if you look there, proposes various ways to improve bike transportation. But these, none of this is cheap. One thing is the narrowing of Main Street and the creation of bike lanes, the expansion of the sidewalks. But it also deals with the Amherst Street corridor, where it proposes that there be protected bike lanes, along with a lot in the south end. Those are huge projects. So, you know, that's a kind of, almost an aspiration as opposed to something that'll be done tomorrow. But every way we can, you know, we'd like to improve, to reduce automobile travel, create more walkable neighborhoods, bring people to live downtown so they can walk to things, they don't have to drive all around. And in that way, get cars off the road and increase safety for pedestrians and, you know, bikers. You might see we put in those flashing lights downtown for the pedestrians. Now, that helps with safety, that's to try to make it so people can cross safely in a, you know, very wide expanse of...
Especially at night.
Yes.
Very important.
Yes.
Is there, should I talk to the police about the things that I'm seeing?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Send them a letter or something.
Well...
Are you sure?
Yes, I would, I think it helps. I mean, I'd be glad to mention it to them, but, you know, I would talk, you know, you could try the chief, or there's a guy, Deputy Fay is probably a good place to go. You know, if you call him and tell him you'd like to talk about this, you know, I think he'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Your Alderman can help you too.
Your Alderman can help you too. Joe Fay.
I talk to Joe Fay a lot, so I'm the liaison from the Board of Aldermen to the police, so...
So Rick will help with that.
But most of our city streets were not designed to have bike lanes. One thing that bugs the heck out of me is we don't have a wider bike lane on Tinker Road because a lot of people bike on Tinker Road, and it's dangerous. And trying to work with the police to do something to make it a little safer, we might reduce it to 25 miles an hour, but those people who use it as a crosscut from Merrimack probably aren't going to be too happy about that, but... Merrimack probably aren't going to be too happy about that, but the bike lane is very narrow and it's, it's not safe. And the problem is with our city streets, we, they're usually about 54 feet wide, but if we tried to expand them, now we're getting into private property, we'd have to buy.
Yeah.
From Pennechuck, right?
Depends, who owns the land? Pennechuck would probably be one of the easier ones.
You can try and set the speed limit for 25. The speed limit for Main Street is 25. I do it. I'm passed by 99% of the people.
Oh, yeah.
Road safety, both on local roads and state roads. I don't even want to tell you about F.E. Everett.
Oh.
Everybody knows that.
It's a racetrack.
I worked with the police department many months ago now, and, and they took the initiative to get with the state police and the Hillsborough County Police, and believe it or not, they stop a lot of cars on the highway now. They have, we have unmarked cars, the state has unmarked cars, and they capture people every day, but you still have people that are driving recklessly. I just saw a motorcycle tonight weaving in and out of traffic, and if I had a dash cam, I would have...
And we're still short police, that's the other problem.
Yes, we're, we've been short anywhere from 11 to 17 patrol officers, and they took an initiative several months ago now, I guess, maybe a year ago.
Yeah, I'd say...
And now hiring police from other departments. They still have to go through the qualifying and the training for Nashua, but they, they get to the street much faster and they're much more easily qualified than, than bringing in, they still bring in recruits and send them to the training, but it costs about $100,000 and a year to get somebody on the street from scratch. It's a lot less expensive to take a, a police officer from another city and, and bring them onboard, bring them up to speed, because we are an accredited police department, and there are certain things that they have to follow, and, and they make, have to make sure that all the officers are aware of that.
They were a great help in my accident, so yes, I...
Good, good.
I really like our police department.
All right, now, Tim, Matt, do you have anything you want to add to these economic development questions?
Well, I, I mean, I would add one thing on street safety. You know, every road, even if it's a 50-foot wide road, a, a community makes decisions about how it wants to use that 50 feet, right? So if you're adding bike lanes, there's actually two benefits from doing that. You narrow the travel lane, and believe it or not, when we're in a narrower lane, we drive slower, we're more sensitive. You maybe add a curb, you change the way the street is designed, and so one thing that we're doing, we're trying to do across the city, but definitely in some of our more heavily trafficked areas, is reimagine how the streets are actually designed. It's hard, you know, it's challenging to balance those different values, getting somewhere as quickly as possible versus having the ability to bike or walk along the street, but I will say that the shift, there's a shift happening where we are changing the way we design streets, and it's going to take decades to totally shift how that's done, but people are thinking about all the different ways that folks get around, much more so when they're designing streets, and that goes for the folks in our Department of Public Works and our engineers. They're an active part of that conversation, so we're thinking about changes downtown. We actually have transportation projects that are being considered by the state for DW Highway, for the Amherst Street corridor as well, and so we're kind of, we're on the list to maybe make some of these changes. It's just going to take a bit of time to actually construct those improvements, so there are...
I don't like that decades, you know, we want to do...
Yeah, well, I'm saying that the, the, the thinking takes...
We won't be riding bikes in decades, that's for sure.
You never know, but it's, it, it takes a long time to change these things, so...
How more difficult is it to implement these things when you don't have your own in-house traffic engineer department to do that?
Well, we, we actually do have our own in-house...
So did you hire new people, or?
Nope, we have, we have a, so within our engineering department, we have dedicated traffic engineers currently.
Because normally, when you guys do a, a construction project, you guys outsource that, you, you hire a contractor to do the, the traffic study.
So it depends on the complexity of the project. So some projects, we do hire outside engineers to sort of assist us when it comes to best practices in design, but, you know, the, when we're talking about grant applications or talking to the state, we actually use our own internal traffic engineering team.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, so we have some internal expertise.
And having done several external traffic analysis, those are all reviewed by Wayne, our city traffic engineer, and he has to sign off on them, bless him.
Relative to economic development and site selection, when I'm working with or, or speaking to some of our larger employers in the city, the, the number one priority that they articulate to me, and it's backed up by research and survey data, is access to human capital and making sure that they have the labor force that they need, and they have the educational attainment that, that is necessary for an innovative workforce. And once they actually have that human capital, retaining those individuals. Nothing's worse for employers, they bring, they onboard someone, and then they, they don't necessarily reap the value because they've moved on quicker, and so they, retaining that, that human capital is a high priority. And so they, they talk to me about making sure we have a labor force that is well-educated, making sure there's access to, to, to educational programs, and housing, making sure we have a housing stock of all differing levels, so when, when the talent is here, they, they have a place to live and, and, and a salary that can, can pay the housing costs. So these are the typical drivers that we hear and discuss regularly as we're trying to develop our, our economic development strategy, which a lot of people don't necessarily think about right away until you start talking about it and you understand how they correlate together, and they go hand in glove. Housing is critical when you're talking to a large employer that is making decisions as to whether they're going to make a $100 million investment, and they could do it here, or they could do it in Silicon Valley, or they could do it in Texas, or they could do it in the Carolinas, and so, you know, making sure that we're positioning ourselves so that investment is made in this region is, is really critical.
Yeah, I still consult for BAE, and one of the things that comes up all the time is when they try to bring new engineers in, and they need a lot of them, because they have a whole bunch of new programs, and is, it's hard for the kids, kids, right out of college, find a place that they can afford to live, you know, especially in Nashville.
Yes. And we're doing a lot on the affordable housing front, which we could talk about, but I see that there's a question back there? Yes?
Yeah, as far as like the Nashville Riverfront project and the Milliar project?
Yes.
What are, what's kind of like the current status of that? Is that, are the hurdles we're facing right now just solely like the funding for it? Are there other factors in play?
We have the funding for it. It took quite a while to get it permitted and designed, much longer than we had hoped, but it needed to be permitted by various environmental agencies, and we believe that construction is going to begin this year on the first phases of it. Tim's very involved there, so why don't you give a little more detail?
Sure, happy to. As I've committed to the mayor, because I don't want to look for a new job, we will be, we'll be starting construction, yes, in some way, this, this summer. First priority is, is what we call the ADA Accessible Ramp on the Cotton Mill Transfer Bridge. That is going to be the number one project to go. That's on the north side of the river, that's on the northwest side over by the Cotton Mill Apartments, but then continuing along on the west side of the river, you're going to see a boardwalk being built out, starting this summer. That would wrap around the new barbecue restaurant that I'm pretty excited about. I don't know if you guys have seen Hidden Pig right there on Main Street, so there's going to be a, a new boardwalk that may is very similar to Peddler's Daughter that would be across the street. Then you're going to see some additional improvements continuing on the south side of the river, so the, the main thrust, to answer your question, is construction starting on the west side of the Riverfront this year, and then we'll be progressing on. This is going to be a multi-year construction project. You'll see us moving on to the east side in the fall years.
So what do you think?
I'm, I'm excited. I've been looking at a lot of the Nashville projects for a couple of years now, and, you know, kind of keeping track of them, and so I'm glad to be here and have that opportunity to, you know, talk to people who are directly involved in those projects and see kind of where they're heading, where they're going, and, you know, when they're starting.
Well, it just was complicated to get engineers to, who have too much work, to speed this along, and the environmental agencies that had to approve it because it is on the, on the water, we needed, you know, it just took more than it should have, I guess. But these are, you know, people we hire, and we, you know, we're just glad they've finally finished. Yes, yes.
I want to ask you a couple of questions. One is about, just in general, the infrastructure money that's wind falling through the country and coming to the state. How does it sift on out into Nashua? Are we in line to get any bucks, or how's that working?
Well, we, a couple of things. First of all, we, we received ARPA money. This is not technically infrastructure money, but it's a form of federal money, American Rescue Plan Act money, $16 million. So we allocated $10 million of that to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is one of the things we're trying to do to promote the development of housing. We did get congressional-directed spending, they're calling it, to a $3 million grant through the efforts particularly of Senator Shaheen and Congresswoman Custer. $3 million for the park between the library, the public library, and the Court Street Building. We, that's a design project that we believe can begin pretty soon, as soon as the money becomes available. And we've got various other grants we're seeking, some, some, for some downtown work and elsewhere, we're looking for, we're trying to get, most of this is competitively available or competitively awarded, and...
Do you have to apply to the state for it, is that...
We, federal, yeah. We apply to the federal government, yeah. Now, one thing that, you know, in terms of transportation infrastructure that was particularly disappointing was the decision on a three-to-two vote by the Executive Council to stop the final planning phase of the Capitol Corridor rail project, the passenger rail for New Hampshire. And, you know, I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors in January, and the representatives from Amtrak, as well as the Federal Rail Administration were there. They're saying, you know, there's unprecedented amounts of money available for rail projects. And then there are people from various states, you know, Utah and Montana, Utah and Montana, or Utah and Idaho, working together to do an intrastate more stout line. There's stuff going on in Texas, there's, Virginia's working on things, Illinois. All these states are working on these different projects, trying to get them ready and get awarded federal funds to undertake the projects. And the Executive Council here, at the worst possible time, again, unprecedented amount of money available to assist, you know, stops the project. So we, we feel there would be great benefit to the state, you know, that's why all these other states are working on these projects, because it, it creates jobs, it creates economic development, it creates real estate development, a lot of residential development occurs around rail stops, and would boost the ability to add jobs to the economy. So, you know, we are now trying to work with Manchester to see if we could somehow locally with them get this, at least this final planning phase done, but we'll have to see, you know, how that works out.
My other question's related to federal money again, but it's, it's really trying to understand, maybe you could just give us some background about broadband and whether the city has ever considered doing our own broadband here like you're doing with the power. I know there's money coming in now, and it seems to not even be an option for us to get any of it the way it's structured.
The, yes, the way it's structured, that this money is available only if, only for communities where a certain level of internet access is not available and a certain speed of data is not available. We have those speeds throughout Nashua or nearly, throughout nearly the entire city, and, you know, there is a, a lot of improvements in the, the fiber going on right now, private investments, so we're not really, that, that money can't be spent here because we already achieved... Now, you know, should it, you know, we've talked with some consultants in the, in the field about, in this field of, of broadband.
Broadband, yeah.
One guy from Maine in particular, well, would it be worth start, trying to start a city internet? He says, his answer basically is no. And the reason is, look, you're competing against two large, well-funded private payers, private, private firms, and, you know, if you...
Consolidated?
Yes, and consolidated is improving their network considerably. He says, look, you know, you've got to be able to undercut them on price, and in the end, they're going to beat you, and in the end, you're going to lose a lot of money. So, you know, they have much deeper pockets, they're not going to allow, you know, the city to kind of undercut their business, so he advised strongly against it. So, but one thing I wanted to mention was the, the other thing Rick here is working on is, in terms of federal money, there are so-called ESER funds, which are available to do infrastructure like heat, HVAC, heat, air conditioning, ventilation in schools. And we've gotten $16 million, the school department has, and that is being matched with $16 million of local money to make vast improvements at the two remaining open concept elementary schools, those being Main Dunstable and Birch Hill. And it will improve the entire HVAC system, which is very expensive, plus enclose classrooms, which is a safer way to go these days than to have kind of a big open school. And...
Just an update, we've already started these two projects, and we'll be getting underway seriously as soon as school is out, because the way we do elementary schools is we, we have what we call face the move the kids. We, we develop classrooms in the gymnasiums, and we have put in a couple portables at each of the elementary schools so that we can ship kids around during the year so we can get the project going. It's, these have been open concepts since my kids went, before my kids went to elementary school, which is a long time ago, and the high school south used to be open concept. That's been done away with, obviously. And so this is a long overdue doing these two schools. And we will be developing the classrooms inside, we'll be doing a whole new HVAC system and all new lights for, for environmental savings and a number of other things that are, are qualified for the ESER funds. And these projects are slated to be done by the summer of '25, so the projects will be ongoing, and the reason it takes that long is because we're moving around kids. We can't interrupt their education, so we have to be cognizant of that. The, the, the other thing I wanted to mention is Pennechuck, I've already signed the substantial completion on Pennechuck. There's only punch list items and things, a couple of things outside, because we have to wait for spring. It's hard to put grass in when you get six inches of snow on it, but we'll be, as soon as the good weather's here, that'll be, this whole school will be completed. And it's, it's, there's one other thing that we're going to try to do to the schools, but we're waiting to make sure that we have the funding to do it. The McCarthy School is going really well. It's going to be an amazing school. The other thing, I spent most of the morning dealing, we're doing the three remaining schools that need security vestibules. When you came in, you went through the security vestibule here at this school. All the schools have it except the three. We'll be working on those starting this summer, and we were going through the designs this morning. And... morning. And that will be completed by the end of next summer, not this coming summer, the summer after that because, again, we're working around kids in school. But the, the, we have spent a lot of time and effort to ensure the safety of the students in the school system. We don't advertise it a lot because it's security, but I can tell you without a doubt that our schools are some of the safest in the United States. And, and we go to great lengths to spend an inordinate amount of hours working on the security aspects of school. And it's, it's, the projects are going well and I'm glad I have the time to do it.
Yeah, so the-
What do you want about the traffic flow?
So the-
The traffic flow, the traffic light was put in by the project. We paid for the traffic light because we couldn't find anybody that wanted to get thirty-five cents an hour to stand out there in that racetrack, even though all the complete tried it for a couple of weeks, someone could kill. So the traffic light was put in and the timing of the traffic light and, and is, is under the auspices of the DPW now and the State Department of Transportation because it's close to the Henry Burke. And they are going to be adjusting the lights this spring or early summer. They've been monitoring the traffic to make sure they know how to adjust the lights and they can adjust them. The other thing is I asked for a right turn lane to be put in so that we wouldn't be any backup on Manchester Street, but the traffic engineer said, no, we don't need it. I still think we need it, but now, now it'll be, it's up to, now it's DPW project.
Now, I wanted to interrupt just for a minute to introduce Sue and Ray Newman, our two state reps from Ward Two here. My guess is they just came back from Concord.
We left about thirty-five minutes.
Yeah, they just got back, so thank you for coming.
Tomorrow.
Thank you, Doc. All the interup there for us.
You're welcome.
A lot of late hours.
It's kind of fun.
So, the other thing I want to mention was on the, on the cost of the commercial buildings and the cost of housing. That was my major in college. It's, it's market driven and, and it's very little we can do. I mean, one thing we can do is bring in additional business and get more business revenue on taxes, but we can't affect the property values too much because it's the, it was, it's set by the economy. Same thing with houses. Houses were way up and that's why the houses are having a bigger share than the commercial. In the last, I forget how many months, the, the housing values in Nashville have gone down thirty-five thousand dollars, which seems like a lot of money, but when you're talking about four, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar homes, it's not really that much. And, you know, it's, 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 the housing values may level off. And the next time we touch assessment, whatever that might be, that shift may go back the other way a little bit, so.
How often do you guys plan on reevaluating the assessments?
Well, if it, if we see a big shift in the, in the, in the relative values, we would do it as soon as we can. I'm going to, Tim is eager here, but I, I wanted to say, I saw another survey that, I mean, the goal, one, one sort of silver lining of all this is that I saw something that said that the average equity that homeowners in Hillsborough County have in homes is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So the average homeowner has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of value in their house, which is, you know, quite a bit. But, and that's one of the side effects of the increase. But, Tim.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Tim Cummings. The, the thought processes and a proposal that I will be bringing before the board of all of them to help smooth out the line of these potential increases or decreases is, is the thought process of doing the reevaluations every two years. And so I have a quote from Vision right now, they've held their, they will hold their price for three rebals to be done in two year, over a two-year span. So 2024 would be the next revale and then that would be a contract that we could then do two year, engage them again two years later and then two years later after that, all with the thought process being that you wouldn't see that forty percent spike anymore in, in theory because we would be constantly looking to, 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 to assess the market more regularly, which ideally, which ideally will help smooth that line out so you're not seeing the peaks or the valleys anymore.
Is the law five years that we have to do it, state law?
The law is five years at a max, at a maximum.
That you're required to do it. And, and the consulting team, and I agree with this as well, they recommend that certain places here in, in New Hampshire do it more regularly. Bedford, for instance, does it annually. Portsmouth does it annually. Dover does it more like every two years. And so we would be moving more towards that type of, more towards that type of model.
Can, in the, in the effort of transparency, could we share what the metrics they're using to base those on so that we can see why my neighbor across the street has a lower evaluation than I do for the same model of property?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm understanding the question though.
Well, we asked, you know, when we go to the assessor's office to ask to see what, what the metrics are that you use to base our things, our, our property evaluation on, they told us that that's not going to be available until later in the spring after we've already paid those property taxes. And so I think in the effort of transparency, if we're going to continue to rotate this model on a shorter timeframe than five years, if, if we could understand where they're getting to that, to that number, I think we'll be able to be more comfortable with the evaluation process.
Two separate issues. First and foremost, I would recommend this to you and to anyone else, if you have any concern about your value, file an abatement. And there's a process that allows you to do that, that would, you know, at least address that specific issue at hand. Separate issue relative to making sure that, you know, you have access to the data and the metrics. The state is, has the, that report that you're talking about and the city itself is waiting to receive that report, but we can't provide it yet because we don't have a finalized, approved, USPAP compliant report that has all that backup data that you, that you're talking about. Because we would love it too. As soon as we get it, we absolutely would produce it.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Now we're getting close to the seven o'clock, or six, seven o'clock hour. Yes?
Okay, real quick, just circling back to the recycling.
Yes.
Okay. Been recycling since the mid-eighties.
Right.
Okay. Most people who recycle want to do the right thing. I had no idea Casella did not want glass.
Yeah.
I had no idea. If, if people knew about that, we might be able to eliminate that from the stream and get a better rate from Casella.
Yes. And you're right.
Because back in the day, glass was one of the big ones.
Right. Now, um-
And I just assumed it still was, yeah.
Now, Public Works has put this out a few times, I think, but it's not like a lot of people see it. So, yes, it's not well-known. I mean, we are doing various things to try to reduce or improve the quality of the waste stream. For example, if your waste stream is wet, that is considered like a, like almost, you know, a tainted waste stream. So within the last couple of years, you might have seen at the recycling area of the landfill, there's, they're now tents over those, over the, like where the cardboard is, the newspaper. That is designed to keep the waste stream dry so that, you know, the quality of the waste stream is higher, which helps to reduce costs. Also, we have had trouble getting more than one bidder because of that. So we hope the next time we go out to bid, you know, we, there's more competition.
Would another company maybe take glass or no one's taking glass?
Well, I don't, I don't know the answer, but my guess from what they're saying is no, they wouldn't, you know. They take it, but they don't, they don't, they don't, you know.
They have to dispose of it.
Right, right. Charles, do you have a question?
No, my hand doesn't.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick one, and you probably know what this is involving. So it's a twofold regarding the TOD district. Would we have any of those, you know, it's, a lot of people don't know what that is, but in terms of the walkability and all of that, are, are any of those federal funds applicable to that, to our situation in that area?
We've applied for some, now, what, the question is TOD, that refers to transportation-oriented development. This is a so-called overlay district that exists east of downtown, near, around the area where the potential Crown Street rail station could possibly go. And it imposes additional requirements in that area and is designed to help transition the area into more of a residential area. We have applied for some projects within that area. For example, there was a big, we applied for the creation of a more, well, we got a rail trail grant that take, that goes from Main Street all the way to Henry Hanger. That goes into the TOD area. We tried to get a grant that would connect east, north and south, the, the end of that rail trail near Henry Hanger and go up to, up Spruce Street to Temple and connect with that little walking bridge that goes to BAE, but we did not get awarded that one. We thought we would, but we didn't. That was like a million dollars. That was a so-called CMAC grant, wasn't it? Anything else we're doing over there?
Well, we're doing several things. There's a, there's what's known as the Spruce Street Connector that would create a multi-use path along Spruce Street to connect what would ultimately be a riverfront connection down to the south, of course, downtown. We also have a redesign of the interchange adjacent to the bridges to Hudson that we currently have on the DOT Transportation Project List. But what I would say generally is, and this is, this is real because we just applied for a significant set of federal funds, the more investment and things happening and the better plan that a community has for an area, it makes you exponentially more competitive when it comes to securing funds. And so, you know, the more redevelopment, housing or, or commercial or mixed-use development that we see happening in that area, the more competitive it makes our grant applications for federal funds. And to that point, even the existing projects I'm talking about, there may be additional monies available. We're starting to hear that, that will make us capable of executing those projects more quickly. The more that we can demonstrate that things are actually happening there, the better it positions us to actually do that.
So is this the particular TOD area of which I'm referring that has to do with the asphalt plant?
The TOD-
The worm trying to get you.
I do, I do. And so I'm not going to answer the, maybe the question you want me to, but the bottom line is the more investment that's happening in an area, the more competitive it makes us. Now, the, the projects I'm mentioning, they're not tied specifically to that transit-oriented development district, but we've said we want this vision as a community for that area generally. That's why those projects are near the top of our list. And one that is very near and dear to the mayor is the Heritage Rail Trail East Expansion that we're trying to move along slowly but surely. And, and the idea there is to connect development along that rail trail area. And certainly if, if projects were proposed that were not in alignment with what that community vision might be, it may compromise our ability to secure federal funds. And that might be the best answer I'm giving.
Could I take this opportunity, please, to remind everyone that tomorrow night, finally, after many, many months of back and forth, the applicant is being heard at City Hall, at the Planning Board, which is planned for 6:00 P.M. And our public input really, really matters.
Is it not six?
It is 7:00 P.M.
Seven.
Oh, seven P.M. Okay, all right. All right, thank you. I am going to get there early. So I just want to remind people about how important the public input is. And it's not too late to send an email that goes to the entire planning board with your opposition to pb@nashuanh.gov. And the three things are of super importance in that area, I feel, and I have done a lot of research on this for many, many, months. I started a, I spearheaded a campaign starting last June and it's taken off with many other groups and I'm so happy about that. Our, uh, the TOD district, as we talked about, the depreciation of properties nearby, which is going to lower our tax base. And also, I feel one of the most important things is traffic congestion with heavy trucks that travel slowly throughout our narrow streets of the city. So, please, everyone, I do hope that you realize, PB, it won't take you a couple of seconds, please, and if you can, please come, because I think we don't want to lose the momentum and I think that our, our city deserves the attention that we're giving this matter. And I thank you to the mayor for coming out against this project. So, thank you all.
So this would, this, this project would be a drag on our ability to try to improve that neighborhood. I, you know, there's no question about that. So we hope that everybody will get involved. It will be heard on the 23rd, but it's likely to be continued for-
Yeah, many months.
Meetings after that because there's a lot of evidence that will be introduced on both sides. Anyway, I want to thank you all for coming and thank you for all your questions and your comments, your ideas. If you, anything else comes up, please feel free to contact us and, you know, hopefully we'll be back to Ward Two again soon and be able to see you again. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause).